Friday, May 30th, 2025, Select Board and Wage and Personnel Board meeting. Is anyone besides Lake Cam recording this meeting today? Thank you, seeing no one is recording. I would now like to hop into our call to order.
Lock it here.
Candido here, Carbone here.
Hunt here.
Seeing all members are here, moving on to the pledge allegiance. Flag is in the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Select Board announcements today. I don't see anything on. Any of the members have anything that they would like to announce? Any upcoming things that we've got? All right. I'm there. And we're going on to the 9:00 AM public hearing. We're a little behind schedule this morning, but I'd like to open the hearing. The public hearing for the Select Board, I'm, oh, sorry, let me go back. It is 9:10 AM and we are opening the public hearing for the Select Board to adopt the layout and alteration to a public roadway for roadway widening, sidewalks and pedestrian curb ramp construction of the following roadways. South Precinct Street Myrick's intersection, Rhode Island Road Myrick's Street intersection, Rhode Island Road La Barron Boulevard intersection, Johnson Drive Rhode Island Road intersection, Harrison Avenue Rhode Island Road intersection, Rhode Island Road Heinrich Drive intersection, and Rhode Island Road Bedford Street intersection. So moved.
Second.
Second? All right. Any conversation, actually, let's just roll call vote.
Aye.
Candido, I. Carbone, aye.
Hunt, aye.
It is now open. So Andrew, do you want to speak to this or would Franklin like to speak to this also and come up to the mic?
Yeah, I can turn it over to-
On what we're trying to achieve here today?
Yep, can turn it over to Frank and Matt. Matt, if you want to start, just a brief overview of the process.
So the plans presented here for adoption represents the alterations to layout required for this project that Mast Dot through state and federal funds is investing $20 million in construction to improve the roadway corridor, upgrade, you know, construct new sidewalks, traffic signal, routine. So there's various locations where the roadway is being widened and the sidewalk is being constructed where those features need to be included in roadway layout. So the selected portions you see on these plans are locations either where the roadway is being widened or there's corners being improved where the pedestrian curb ramps need to be included in roadway layout. And then there's a couple of locations where there's signs being installed for pedestrian crossings that need to be included in the layout as well. So that's really the intent of these plans for the board to adopt.
Thank you very much. All right, do we want to have any further discussion or any more context from Franklin or is that's pretty much it? All right. Andrew, is there anything else you'd like to add before we open up the floor and open up the Select Board for comments?
Just point of information, this is on the town meeting agenda in a week and a half.
Yep. Very good. I'll open up to the Select Board for comments.
So, you know, this project has been going on for quite a few years now, so, you know, we're getting to, you know, toward the end of the project. Nice to see you, Matt, by the way.
Good.
So it's, it's nice that we're moving forward, but this is, you know, always a touchy, you know, situation because it does affect the abutters, you know, to the project. So it's important that we have the hearing and hear, you know, what our residents have to say and listen to their comments. So I'm happy to be here on Friday morning so that we can check this off our list.
Yes, and there was a total list of 10 abutters that were identified and sent out notice by Constable for this hearing. Anything else from other Select Board members? I'd like to open it up to members of the public to come one at a time and come sit and speak at a mic and we can have a nice conversation. Please, welcome.
And Madam Chair, you know, if you wouldn't mind identifying-
Yes.
-who you are and your address, just for the record.
So we're here on behalf of 150 Bedford Street Rhode Island Road, which is Russo's RV. And my name's Michael Russo. This is my brother David Russo, who operates the business at that location right now. And we did meet with Matt this past Wednesday at the location. We had a site visit to discuss what was going on, trying to get some clarity on the drainage, how it affects the properties regarding wetland and stuff like that, because we feel we're going to have to deal with conservation also in the future. We're going to lose a tremendous spot on the corner. It affects both sides of the road, basically because of the turning radius to go on to Route 18, whether they're going to go on that side as well as the bike path that goes along there. So on top of having an impact on the turning radius to get into the garage, which we can't move the building, we're losing about 30 feet off the road. So to put a camper at the garage, right now, we go right up to the edge of the road. So when they're putting camp-
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you're saying you're losing space, is this part of the roadway layout that already exists that-
No.
-you're using or actual you're using, losing space?
We're going to lose space. So when they, when they put that turning radius to go right onto Route 18, coming from Middleborough into Lakeville going towards Berkeley, they're going to cut into that spot. They want to remove and stack the fencing that's existing along the road. So it's not remove and replace, it's remove and stack. We realize there's going to be some type of compensation to replicate a new fence, but it's going to be further in. So when you take 30 feet off of, you know, coming into the property and we know it goes at an angle, it's going to be very difficult to back up trailers. Trailers come in, they're 36 feet long. They're longer than that because they don't count for the tongue or the bumper. So you're already at 40 feet. Then you've got a tow vehicle on the front, so it's going to be very, very difficult to do repairs and we can't move the garage. The way the garage sits right now, we could lift a bus if we wanted to with the lift that's in there. So it's a, it's a big system that we have. So that's going to, you know, be a dramatic impact on the business, you know, pulling out towards the road, maybe impacting the road as, you know, they're putting campus in that park for the full day to do work on and stuff like that. So the way the plan sits right now, we're looking to replicate some of the land that we're going to lose because we're going to lose retail spots as well as the turning radius. So the way the plan sits now, we're looking to add another curb cut, which would be further up on Route 79, which we also own Zero Rhode Island Road. So it's 150 Bedford Street as well as Zero Rhode Island Road. There is a drainage system easement on Zero Rhode Island Road and we'd be looking to put the curb cut right about there that would access the back parcel of lands, which would give us, it'd basically be just in, there wouldn't be customers going in that way. It would be done mostly by David or, you know, an employee that works there to bring campus in that way to be able to turn them around to try to back them into that spot as well as give additional retail spot to sell the campus. We're going to lose, it's up for debate. Matt figures that the blacktop is going to exist as is, but the fence is going to come in. It's about 15 feet right to the edge of the grass, so we still won't be able to put the campus there as well as we have a propane filling station in the back. So the turning radius is going to be greatly impacted. We may have to take the fence down that gives us security in the back just to improve that turning radius as the campus are coming in. The fence was designed years ago just for security. They've gone into campus in the morning where people have spent the night, so we're going to have a problem as far as securing that. We don't bring it up to the public all the time. If there's something that happens, we just deal with it. On top of that, there's a telephone pole that we own, that's on the property, that puts lighting out on Route 18 and 79 for security purposes. That's going to be removed and there's nothing in the budget that shows any lighting for that intersection. And as you're adding pedestrian crossing, I would think you'd want that lit up at night so somebody doesn't get hit. Right now, I mean, if you go there at night, you'll see that they greatly light up that corner. So that's going to be gone because they're taking the pole down. We don't have any choice with that.
I wish we had a big nap in front of us right now. Because I'm envisioning, I'm trying to envision it and I know you live with it, so you're very familiar with it.
Yes, on the corner of 18 and 79, there is a big telephone pole, it's a big light, it lights up the whole corner for our security, the campus, but we're losing that parcel of lands that lights up that intersection. That won't be there anymore. So the additional curb cut, we know we're going to have to go through conservation for that.
Because it's wetland.
It's man-made wetlands. So it's, it's been produced biotic drainage onto the property as well as years ago when the industrial park put their road in, the drainage goes towards the dealership there. We don't want to lose existing land that we have. So we're not, you know, water starts coming in, we could actually lose existing land that we already have, which would put them out of business. I don't know if you want that to happen in town or not. I mean, they add quite a bit of revenue.
We're obviously not looking for that. Matt, could you, could you speak to this?
Yeah, well, we did speak about this potential new curb cut yesterday and we do think it's feasible to add that curb cut. We would just need a conceptual site plan from the property owner to see where they'd like to add that and then we can certainly run that by Mast Dot, but my feeling is based on where they want to add that, we definitely have time to add it to the plans. It wouldn't require further right-of-way alterations to the plans that we're looking at today. And then just to address some of the other concerns regarding that light pole that's impacted, so that does need to be removed and stacked. That will be part of the right-of-way compensation that the property owner receives through the appraisals. So they will have compensation to reset that pole on their property where they see fit. And just to clarify some of the dimensions referenced, the existing roadway layout that the town owns today extends to about 24 feet from the edge of the roadway. The acquisition needed here extends about another 10 feet on the private property. And we're not altering the curb radius entering the property, but the edge of the road is certainly moving closer to the private property than it is today due to the widening needed.
We won't be replacing that light. That's a safety issue that the town's going to have to deal with as far as that intersection goes. We're not, we're not going to replicate that pole. It'll be too close to our sign that we have on the road right now and it's a big, a big sign, so that won't be replicated by us as far as that goes.
Yeah, so the state, the state, as I mentioned yesterday, the state does not, does not look to typically light, you know, roadways of this type unless it's a highway interchange or ramp. And the way that light sits today, it's geared toward lighting the private property. It's not, not adequate, it's not lighting the roadway to roadway design standards anyways, so, and it's on private property, so there's nothing that can be done or be set that by the state by their right-of-way requirements. It has to be removed and stacked, so, yeah, you can choose to do what you, what you see fit with that.
I can tell you that the police department has on several occasions asked the dealership, can you show us videotape of what happened last night in the roadway and stuff like that? So you can ask my brother about that. It's happened several times where there's been an accident, there's an altercation, a death. What do you have on camera? If it's not lit up, we had to say.
Members, do we have some comments, questions?
I'm just trying to take it all in, I'm just trying to process all of this.
I know we have a lot of people in the audience. I want to try to get through everyone. I really appreciate you taking your time and talking to us.
So the biggest thing is we just don't want the plans approved the way they sit because we do have to have that curb cut just to, you know, access parcels of land that we're going to lose as well as retail spot. So it's going to dramatically impact the business as it is today and the value of the business. So, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next person like to come and speak?
I just want to add one thing.
You have to come to the mic and your name and your address, please, and thank you.
Sheila Russo, 150 Bedford Street Russo's RV Center. I just want to say that I know they're talking about just working on campers. It's not just that. It's also deliveries of brand-new units, delivery of parts, supplies. Usually it's a big, huge, flat tow, double tow trailers that it loads on two to three units at a time. To swing that in is very difficult the way it is now and for us to lose more of that. You did see, Matt, you did see one delivery truck that was trying to back in. There was a delivery being made while you guys were there on Wednesday. I don't know if you noticed that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, to make that swing now is difficult. Now to cross three lanes, I don't know how that's going to work. So I just want to throw that out there. It's not just also working on people's units, it's also delivery rentals, sales, and parts. So that's all. Just want to throw it out there. Thank you.
I appreciate you speaking on it. Would anyone else like to come to speak? I see a lot of people out here, so I figure everyone's going to come talk. Anyone else? Come on up. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Christopher King. I live at 70 Clear Pond Road. Although the intersection wasn't listed for this agenda, actually, my property is at the last intersection in the project, at Clear Pond Road and Rhode Island Road. And I'm concerned about the project being adopted and approved as stands because the corner of those two streets is currently laid out as being owned by the town, but after doing some extensive research at the registry of deeds, I actually found that the people who owned my property prior to me purchased it from the town. I think this was because this is using the 1987 town layout and the property was purchased sometime after that. So I know it's not technically a part of the intersections listed for the agenda, but I wanted to bring it forward.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's not part of anything we're talking about here, but I would like to find out on the due diligence portion of what we were doing, if that came up, if you have record of that or if we can just discuss that at another point in time prior to the meeting, because that seems like a pretty relevant point to your point about ownership of parcel.
Question, what was the address again?
70 Clear Pond Road.
Are you looking it up? Chris is the new Brian, who's got his computer. So when we're looking at Clear Pond Road, is it on the right?
So if you were on Rhode Island Road, traveling against towards like Middleborough, that area or east, I suppose that would be, Clear Pond Road comes up on your right.
Yeah.
And my property is the technically corner property. Our driveway faces Rhode Island Road, so when we moved in, I was always confused as to why our address was Clear Pond Road, but-
Yes, we like to do different people. Okay, all right, that's why where the confusion was coming in, because I thought that it was, I was further down on Clear Pond Road. Okay, I know which one, which driveway it is.
Apparently the Clear Pond Road actually used to run through what is, or what I have assumed is my front or side yard and they moved the road and that created two town parcels. And later on, one of those parcels was purchased by Walter and Gail Hots sometime after this 1987 town layout that's being used. I have the deeds and everything too. I know it's not technically a part of this meeting, so I apologize.
If you could send all your information to our town administrator so we can make sure-
Yeah, Chris sent me an email, I think, was it yesterday?
Yes.
So we're trying, I have about four or five people tracking all this down. They just don't have an answer yet.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to bring it forward in a meeting just on record.
Thank you for bringing that to us. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I can, Matt, you can clarify, with this project, anytime that there's correspondence or inquiries of our residents that are abutters, you know, we just kind of keep track of that. So I just wanted to let folks know that, you know, this doesn't just go into the abyss, like this will stay, you know, as a, a report, I guess, to, you know, the project, a recording to the project, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any-
We have a ADCOM on contract that handles that whole process.
Okay.
Having phone call, every email, they track and-
Yep, yep, thank you. It's a, it's a fully realized process that everyone has to do things in a certain order and how, in six years is it recorded?
I believe so.
Yeah, something like six years of record. Would you like to come to the mic?
Hi, my name is Donna Catano and I'm one of the lucky people that are getting this improvement. I'd like to know, I'm pushing 80 here, am I going to have to shovel the sidewalk that's about 600 foot in front of my house?
You mean for-
The state law states you're responsible to clear the sidewalk in front of your house and where they're going all the way up Route 18 from the corner all the way up to the next, the driveway. That's over 600 feet. I have all I can do is to shovel my stairs, let alone the whole 600 feet.
Matt, do you have an answer to that?
I'd have to defer the town to clarify what the maintenance responsibilities are.
But it's a state road.
Portion of it.
Okay.
The other portion is town road. The town doesn't have a bylaw or anything in place right now that states that the public needs to clear their sidewalk on their road. Now, whether the state layout, the state requires that, I don't know.
And I don't have that information.
Okay, well, I want you to know right up front, if you're going to arrest me, you might as well do it the first storm because I can't do it. Okay?
You hear that, Matt?
Not going to happen.
Well, I mean, I can't do it. So, I mean, just so you're aware.
Good point.
And, yeah, well, I might as well. They have never, I've been there for 45 years and there's never been any kind of sign to see how fast people go there in 45 years. I mean, maybe before that they did it, but they go through the red lights and I have requested never too much upfront, but why there was no turn on red. So now you people have figured out that we should have a turn on red and just take, you know, the people's property that have been there for 45 years, you know, it's okay now. And where the sidewalk is going on my side, there's a drop where Mast Dot has never maintained the water problem. There's four catch basins on the intersection. I'm sure you're going to put them somewhere. And then it drains on my property and it goes under Route 18 and drains further on, which is a joke because if you happen to shoot underneath the road, the pipe goes uphill and we all know, even me, that water don't float uphill, okay? They came and corrected the problem, Mast Dot. I've been dealing with it for 45 years. They came and rectified the problem and fixed everything nice. They came out, never even used a teaspoon of dirt to rectify the problem. The water's still draining on my property, never been rectified. And I'd like to know, are they going to straighten that out before they do this? Because when the people fall off a five-foot drop on the sidewalk, I don't want them to drown with all the water you got there.
I can, I can speak to it.
Donna, what is your address for the record?
126 Rhode Island Road.
Everything we're talking about right now was addressed in the conservation meeting that Matt and myself attended and this was all being addressed.
Okay.
Am I ever going to know what you people are going to be doing on my property?
Well, in the conservation meeting that we went to multiple times, these were your same concerns.
Correct.
And Matt and one of his associates explained to you that this is all going to be rectified.
When?
When the project is done.
Is it going to be rectified better than the last time it was rectified where nothing was done?
Yeah, like I said, we went over all this, this is, we can look back on that meeting, but all the water will be collected, it's all going to be in pipes, nothing's going to go on to your property. It's going to be an improvement from what it is now.
Well, that's exactly what they said 10 years ago, 20 years ago. I mean, I've heard this story before. I'd like to see some plans or facts.
I hear your frustration. Were you able to show plans for the drainage or the conservation?
They were all there.
Do we have copies of that?
Conservation proved it, they were happy with it.
Can we send a copy of those plans?
They actually called us back specifically for Ms. Catano's issues. We have to do a continuing comeback.
I would love to see the plans, but not so, even with a magnifying glass, you can't see it.
Andrew, can we make that happen?
Could it be something that I could see with glasses?
Can we put it out on like a plot planner and print it out for her so she can identify with that problem, with not being able to see the plans as well?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and I appreciate your concerns about, now, I don't think I'm incorrect in saying that is our most dangerous intersection in all of Lakeville. It has had the most fatalities in all of our intersections. It's actually what we weigh all our other issues against when we're trying to get something done down at 18 and, was it 18105? That, that's not our priority from the state. They're saying they want to go where the most fatalities happen. And all these changes that we're doing, just like you said, the widening, the, the right turn on red, my assumption is there'll be cameras on top of the stoplights, the turn signals, I mean, what are they called? The, the lights?
Traffic lights?
Yeah, the traffic lights. I don't know that answer, but I'm pretty sure everything I've seen new, they come in on them?
Matt may know that.
Matt, do you know?
Whatever falls under the state standards, I know.
Is it a state standard?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the question related to the signal?
Is it a state standard now to have cameras on the traffic signals for intersection like that?
The cameras are for detection of vehicles, not for security reasons.
Yep, oh, right, yep, that's what, for, yeah, capturing people blowing through red lights, et cetera, or no?
No, this isn't for speed enforcement. These, these cameras are, they actually detect the cars so then it helps the signal system determine when it should turn green and red, et cetera. I will say, part of the safety issue out there today is visibility to that signal equipment. It's old, it's outdated, there's tree growth that needs to be trimmed, especially from the Route 18, the higher speed approaches. So part of the investment in this project is a new signal system that will greatly improve safety here and address the speed issue as well.
Questions from the board? On that?
Now, I have another question too, where they've decided to take some of my property, permanent easement, and then they have a temporary easement. permanent easement, and then they have a temporary easement. So they're almost going to be able to walk into my front door of my house. That's how far it's coming in. And then, of course, the telephone poles, rather than run the wires under the ground, they're going to move the telephone poles even closer to my property. And even if they space the telephone poles, I've got the wires hanging there. And allegedly, there's a 50-foot radius around the wires that they can trim. So where that affects, all the trees, along where the poles are, when they move everything in among about 25, 30 feet, there goes a lot of my trees. Now, I know a state law is a tree for a tree. I'm sure you're going to replace these trees and not trim them so they keep dying the way they have been trimmed lately.
So that's the state trimming, which I don't have any insight to whatsoever, but I do understand your frustration. Any of these type of projects that we take on are going to disproportionately affect some people, and I'm, you know, very sorry for everyone that's getting disproportionately affected here today. And if it wasn't something to do with safety and security of people driving and coming through the town and making everyone as safe as possible, I would love to, you know, try to have some standards where I can move this or move that. The state does not allow a lot of flexibility in what they have for design standards and what they're looking to do. So even though we are going to take everything into consideration, there's not a lot we can do to change the way the state operates for something like that.
Now, Route 79, is that a state road or a town road?
No, town road is 79.
Okay, and the town road is 40-foot wide, correct? I know the state is 66.
I'm not sure what the.
It changes throughout.
Yeah.
Matt probably knows exactly what the.
Yeah, I think it narrows down to like 27 at one point, but that's not the road layout. That's just the actual road.
Yeah.
Right, so when they put the sidewalk in and whatever they keep coming in, I have a house lot, a buildable house lot, and in Lakeville, you need 70,000 square feet. When they take my property.
We addressed this about two years ago, or three years ago, about the lot size. And I don't have it obviously in front of me, but I know it was, everyone has made whole for that, where they're not going to, do you remember it, Franklin? Like, this was, now I'm talking actually five years ago.
Probably a neat darling.
Yes, we can get some answers on that for you.
Right, because, I mean, I, I don't have an income, and that is my backup plan as I got older, to sell that house lot, and now I'm not even going to have a buildable house lot. So there goes, how much does a house lot go for? Because we're putting in a sidewalk that people can fall off and get hurt.
So I just want to clarify the improvements along this frontage, the sidewalk work and the pole relocations occurring along the frontage of 126. All that work is occurring within the current town layout. The only acquisition to this property is for overhead easements, so that the utility poles can maintain and keep tree limbs clear, and that's a five-foot offset from the overhead wires.
Okay, well, they've been trimming close, a lot closer. But, okay. Drainage, that. Oh, another big thing, I have a well on my property, and it's been there forever. And now with your improvements, and let's say the town does decide to clear the sidewalks, and they salt them, that's going to affect my well. Now, my well was on my property before you decided to widen the road and put sidewalks in and have easements, and I didn't know all this was going to happen when I bought the house. And when we put the well in 45 years ago, we didn't know all this was coming. And I cannot afford to move my well for convenience. Now, I've had my well tested. The water is fine. There's no bacteria. It's a little on the hard side. But who's going to compensate if it all changes?
As we spoke about in the conservation meeting with these same issues, is now the water's going to all be collected on the road, everything's pitched towards the road, collecting the basins and then running down Route 18 and being put across the road away from her property. So nothing's going to be going into her property. As it stands right now, every time we plow and salt, the majority of that runoff is going into her property, along with everybody else's property along with 79, because there's very little drainage there.
So it should improve with the improvement of the drainage project?
Yes.
Could I have that in writing? Because my lawyer wanted me to get some of this in writing, because we're talking, I don't remember, because I'm old.
There'll be a record, a public record, as Tracy prints the notes out. And, and the video is obviously a record as well.
And then conservation also has that on record, because that was one of their big concerns.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I think that. The other thing I don't understand, I know I sound stupid here, but why would you want to have a wheelchair-accessible sidewalk come on my side of the property, cross where everybody gets killed, and go on the other side? It don't make sense to me. Can you explain that one to me?
Not sure I understand that question.
Okay, coming down 79, my house is on the left, where you people are doing all your improvements at the lights. It kitty corners and goes down 79 on the other side of the road. Is that a setup for people coming off this wheelchair-accessible sidewalk to get killed going kitty corner across that highway?
So that intersection, again, is going to be designed with safety improvements and crosswalks so that people in wheelchairs or walking can safely cross the road in marked crosswalks with signal indications for them to safely cross. And the sidewalks were located to minimize right-of-way impact. So as mentioned, that sidewalk on that side of the road is all within the town's layout.
Okay, and these lights that you're putting up and everything, that's going to be in the town's layout? You won't be putting that on my property too, will you? The traffic lights?
Nothing's going on yet.
Relative to 126 Rhode Island Road, there's no traffic signal equipment proposed on private property.
Okay, because I'm going to have the corners surveyed by my surveyor and the marks put up, and I hope they don't disappear. I have trouble in the back lot with them disappearing, and it's expensive to survey your property and then they disappear. So that I'll have done, and where the traffic lights not going on my property, I feel better.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you. Sorry for being so miserable, but.
No one's happy when, no one's happy when they have to come to the board of selectmen for these type of meetings, I understand.
Yeah, well, after all these years, and now they've decided to do what they want. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they would like, please come up to the state, your name and your address, please?
Good morning.
Morning.
Mike Dennehy, trustee of Barren Hills. Just a couple of quick questions. Do we know where they're going to start this construction? Which end of the construction's going to start first? And then?
I don't think we have that.
Is there a way to tell, talk about traffic during the construction period?
Franklin, would you like to?
Yes, we don't know where. It's, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to be up to the contractors to decide where they start and whatnot. But there will be continuous information put out as far as, as far as I know, there's going to be continuous traffic. We're not going to, there's not going to be any shutdowns or very small shutdowns if there are. But there'll be constant communication between residents and businesses to say where and when traffic's starting, just as we do in town now. When this project's, there'll be continuous communication going on.
Okay. Another thing is, I guess, is some conservation work going to be done this year? This summer? Am I right in saying that?
No, not through this project.
Not through this project, okay.
Not that I know.
And the plan is to start in 2026, is that it?
Most likely.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
So, could I get his last name? I didn't catch it.
Dennehy.
He's home for me.
D-A-N-A-H-Y.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm going to close the hearing. Remember, Flaca, come back. I don't know. Okay. I need you in. We have a forum, okay? Let's go. All right, make a motion to, oh, I'll take a motion to oppose the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding the Route 79 project at 9:49.
Seconded.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Are you guys ready for the longest motion ever?
Yes, please.
All right. The Select Board of the Town of Lakeville acting pursuant to GL Chapter 82, Sections 21, 24, and having determined that the common convenience and necessity require the alteration of the layout of the public ways of Harrison Ave, Myrick Street, Precinct Street, Johnson Drive, Bedford Street, and Rhode Island Road to include within said layouts of the lands depicted as parcel L-X-1, parcel L-X-2, parcel L-X-3, parcel L-X-4, parcel L-X-5, parcel L-X-6, parcel L-X-7, parcel L-X-8, parcel L, parcel L-E-3, and parcel L-E/6. On the plan entitled Layout Alteration Plan of Land for Rhode Island Road, Myrick Street, and Precinct Street, Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated May 9, 2025, prepared by Dowd, hereby orders the said layouts to be altered in the manner depicted on the said plan. So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Flaca, aye.
Kandita, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Hunt, aye.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, oh, everyone's attended. They all, while I was reading my massive motion, they all left. Thank you all very much for attending and being active participants, even though I know not everyone's happy with the result. I do appreciate people coming out and being heard. Anything else? Andrew, you looked like you wanted to say something.
No, just, I mean, Agenda Item 5 is kind of tied to this.
Okay.
But we can do it afterwards.
Got it. Let us go to Agenda Item number four.
Thank you, Franklin.
Thank you.
Very much.
You going to stay here for five, or are you leaving? You're done?
I'll stay for five.
You're going to stay for five. All right. Chief Perkins?
Good morning.
Good morning. In our previous executive session of the Board of Selectmen, we had a chance to go over the employment agreement and changes written within the employment agreement for your next contract. The board voted unanimously to approve the contract. We are here today to ratify that vote in open session. Is there anything that you would like to say, or any of the board members would like to say?
Thank you. Thank you to the board, and, you know, I look forward to continue my service to the town.
We really appreciate you, and it was, it's been a great few years of having you as chief, and I think the town's been better for it, so I'm all for it. Anyone else?
Thank you.
So we'd like you to stay.
Thank you very much.
We wrote, there's no retirement in here, and that you have to go on for the next level, but yes. Very good. Anyone else?
I'm sure that we do appreciate your service and dedication to the town, and definitely look forward to continuing on as our chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Take a motion to approve the employment agreement between the Town of Lakeville and Police Chief Matthew Perkins, agreement effective June 22, 2025, and remaining in effect until June 22, 22, sorry, June 22, 2028.
So moved.
Seconded.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Flaca, aye.
Kandita, aye. Carbone, aye.
Hunt abstained.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda Item number five. Revisit to approve and adopt layout for Harrison Ave. Last two weeks ago, we met on this. We were bundling the motion. We didn't have all the right wording for the motion, so we'd like to re-vote the motion to make sure it is completely correct, and all our i's are dotted and t's crossed. Would anyone like to read the motion?
Sure.
The Select Board of the Town of Lakeville acting pursuant to General Law Chapter 82, Sections 21 to 24, and having deemed that common convenience and necessity require that the layout of a portion of Harrison Ave Avenue as a public way be confirmed in the location depicted on the plan entitled Layout Plan of Land for Harrison Avenue, 222 feet from Rhode Island Road, dated February 24, 2025, prepared by Dowd Engineering, Inc., which plan is presently on file with said Select Board and incorporated herein hereby orders that said way be laid out and confirmed as a public way in the location shown.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion and second. Any further discussion for anyone?
No.
Like I said, this is just to clean up the language, to make sure we have everything proper, so roll call vote?
Flaca, aye.
Kandita, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Hunt, aye.
Thank you, everyone. That's it for you, Ben Franklin.
Thank you. Thank you, Franklin.
Franklin's team is very busy. I see them all over the place right now. All right. New business? Old business? Any other business to come before the board? Okay, next Select Board meeting is June 2, 2025, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and second. Roll call vote?
Flaca, aye.
Kandita, aye. Carbone, aye.
Hunt, aye.